Members, we're going live. We're going to call the special meeting for Akron City Council to order. Clerk will read the role.
Baylor?
Hi.
Connor?
Hi.
Freeman?
Hi.
Fusco?
Hi.
Kammer?
Hi.
Lombardo?
Hi.
McHittick?
Hi.
Malik?
Hi.
Neil?
Hi.
Imobian?
Hi.
Samples?
Hi.
Somerville?
Hi.
Swersky?
Hi.
All members are present.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to ask if we can please have a motion to suspend all council rules that require us to do in-person meeting and in-person voting. Councilman Fusco?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to suspend all council rules or require, or contemplate in-person meetings and in-person voting.
So we have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second by Councilman Kammer?
I will second Jeff's motion.
We have a second roll call.
Baylor?
Hi.
Connor?
Hi.
Freeman?
Hi.
Fusco?
Hi.
Kammer?
Hi.
Lombardo?
Hi.
McHittick?
Hi.
Malik?
Hi.
Neil?
Hi.
Imobian?
Hi.
Samples?
Hi.
Somerville?
Hi.
Swersky?
Hi.
Motion passes thirteen to zero.
Also, at this time, I'm going to ask if we can please have a motion to suspend all council rules that requires legislation first be considered by committees before the entire council. Councilman Fusco?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend all council rules that require that legislation first be considered by committee before presentation and consideration by council.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second by Councilwoman Baylor?
Second.
Roll call.
Baylor?
Hi.
Connor?
Hi.
Freeman?
Hi.
Fusco?
Hi.
Kammer?
Hi.
Lombardo?
Hi.
McHittick?
Hi.
Malik?
Hi.
Neil?
Hi.
Imobian?
Hi.
Samples?
Hi.
Somerville?
Hi.
Swersky?
Hi.
Motion passes thirteen to zero.
All right, thank you. Before we move on to the rest of our agenda, I have asked Chief Ball to join us just to give us an update in terms of the weekend's events with the protests and gatherings that we did have. Chief Ball, are you with us?
Yes, yes, I am. I picked a bad time to walk out of the basement of the building. I thought you were going to get to me first.
No problem.
Well, I apologize for all the noise. Okay, I'll give you just a basic rundown and then certainly answer any questions that you guys would have. We had received information earlier in the week. Our planners in our information system, our information systems and technologies units, they keep an eye on all the social medias so that if there is any information that is starting to circulate, gathering, gathering any momentum, that we would be aware of that. We started to see it early in the week. There was a series of meetings that were planned or protests that were planned. And one group in particular was going to hit Canton one day, Akron and Cleveland. They were attached to a group that historically, there've been a little bit more problems with with that particular group than others and have often like out-of-towners and, you know, almost professional protesters have attached themselves to those types of meetings. On Friday night, Canton notified us that all of their hotels, motels were booked to capacity. They believe that it was as a result of people coming into town to participate. So it was at that point in time, we went from planning that basically was, you know, let's, let's be prepared, let's have a plan in place, but really not an expectation that it was going to be anything that was major because of the history that we have in the city and have having, having had really good luck and handled these situations with a few major disruptions. So Saturday, that is kind of the way it went. The activity started pretty early. During the day, there were separate groups that came in from different places, and I think that was just for the, for the logistic factors. They had Second Baptist, as an example, down on South Main Street, a place for everybody to park and to be able to walk down together. Those meetings or those early in-the-day protests were loud. There was some aggressiveness. There was a lot of anger. But then there were also opportunities for dialogue. They had them between some of the commanders that were from the police department. The mayor was down earlier in the day, Mr. Brown, and then in the evening, myself, the mayor, Mr. Brown, and Chris Luddell came, we came back down. We had really personal conversations that seemed to be very beneficial for both sides. And the group eventually was breaking up and leaving. When we decided to go back to our command center, which was at the new fire station, Station Four down at on Thornton Street, it basically had, almost all parties had dispersed. But as we got down there, it was close in proximity, the, close in proximity to the time that darkness started. And and shortly after we got there, we, we had been watching a live stream the entire time at the emergency, or the emergency operations center. There were actually videos that were being taken, video that was being taken by members of the protesting groups. Well, as soon as it got dark outside, there started to be another swell of people. It was a different group of people. This one was the, the group that started to get violent and aggressive. They started throwing rocks at the police officers, rocks at the police building, bottles at our officers and building. And when it got to that point, officers, according to our plan and with the idea of keeping the rest of the people that were around safe, our officers safe, property safe, we deployed chemical gas, tear gas, and then moved the group down South High Street. And it took probably about an hour altogether with another launch of gas. A little bit later into it that finally we got a dispersment. But as they went differing ways from South High Street, there started to be damage being done at the buildings. And with several windows that were smashed out of downtown buildings, we had a couple of city trucks that had windows or windshields that were smashed out. But that pretty much was the crux. That lasted about an hour, and fortunately after that, we didn't have any major incidents. I do have the totals for, for what we know now, and I can give everybody that information. No, I pulled it out. I think that while I was talking to you, my back was one way. And it looked like my toes blew away. There were approximately eleven businesses that suffered some kind of damage, one form or another. Most of them were broken windows. There was one person that was arrested. That was an individual who, who was witness to have busted a window out of one of our service trucks. No other arrests were made that night. We, we really tried to have a, a very neutral approach to this. Our officers were distanced from the protesters, interspersing at times when those conversations I mentioned earlier were happening. And it went pretty well. We actually visited down at Second Baptist, the mayor, Mr. Brown, myself and Chris. After the, the second one did break up. But that's where we were Sunday, Hardisty Park. There was a, a planned event. And it was dramatically different from the latter part, protest on Saturday night. They were not only following all, all the laws, they were using crosswalks, they were crossing with the light, making a lot of noise. Not, of course, the, the comments were not real pleasant and, but they were not breaking any other laws otherwise. And that ran pretty much for most of the afternoon with no problem whatsoever. So that, those, those are the highlights. We had an incident today at Chapel Hill Mall. You, some of you may have seen about it on social media today. Don't think there's any relationship whatsoever. It just appeared to have been an organized smash-and-grab attempt at a jewelry store that's still in operation at Chapel Hill Mall. Approximately ten suspects were involved. They rushed the store, smashed out some countertops, stole some jewelry. At first, it was concern or questions of whether or not it might be related to these most recent incidents, but it appears that it wasn't.
Chief Ball, thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
At this time, do you have any questions or comments? Councilman Neil?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief Ball, thank you for the update. I know with COVID-19, they've been monitoring the movement of communities as, to see if people are socially distancing. Any of that technology, can it help us in regards to if we can pinpoint when the disturbing times were taking place where we can kind of like zero in on, on who was in that area at that time using the same technology?
Russ, I'm, the technology you're referring to, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Basically, basically, they, they cross sync with the cell phone companies to see what cell phones were in that area at that time.
I, I think that no, if we had gotten very specific threats of physical violence ahead of time, that, that would be a step that might be appropriate. But outside of that, it probably, I would, in my estimation, without talking to one of our police legal advisors, I would say that that would be an intrusion that would not be appropriate, and it certainly wouldn't be well received.
Well, I, I know they've been, it's been publicly publicized that they're using that technology to monitor, monitor society in regards to movement with the COVID activities. So just, just a question, sir. Thank you.
And I, I would think that that would relate more to it being labeled as a public health crisis or emergency. But for example, we had, we, Ohio City Highway Patrol, Summit County Sheriff, they assisted us during the operation with some events that weren't people front-facing. But we did use a drone that they had just to be able to have kind of an eye in the sky and look and see, is there somebody carrying a large, you know, large bags in that could potentially have a cache of weapons. Some of the other protests nationwide, there have been numerous reports of water bottles that were, were filled with kerosene or gasoline or unknown chemicals. Officers coming away from those protests with serious chemical burns. So we were looking for those kind of things and any assemblies where they would be passing out that kind of, I mean, they even have on some of the, on a video where they were making those concoctions. So we had our drone up as far away from our people as we could have it. Later in the evening, one of the protesters had their own drone up, but everybody thought it was the police, and that again, got people riled up somewhat. But that's a tactic that these professional agitators use is they're the ones who start throwing the rocks. They're the ones who start some of the chants. They're the ones who are hoping to get hits on their social media, social media pages and viewers on their live streams and they're monetizing this. So that's why they're going from city to city. Because if they can, if they can get that kind of attention, it's beneficial for them. There was one point in time where we were monitoring the social media down at the center. There were about 200 people that were watching the one particular live feed we were watching. And as soon as the gas was shot, it jumped up by a thousand people, thousand viewers when the gas went off. So, you know, the technology that we do use and whether it be the drones or anything, sometimes it can be, and we were told Saturday that it, it was seen as a form of intimidation or that we're aggravating a situation. So we try to be very careful with that. And based on what happened in Cleveland and in Canton, I think fared very well compared to other municipalities over the weekend.
Again, sir, thank you.
I, is, I found, I found my list. As a matter of fact, I'll give you these real quickly. We had windows broken out of two city trucks. Those were parked at South High Street and State Street. That's where we made our single arrest. We had two windows broken out on the state street side of the Poske Building. We had windows on the high street side of the Poske Parking Deck that were broken out. Three windows at 11 East Exchange Street, three windows at 333 South Main, which is the Evans Building. We had three windows that were smashed out at One West Exchange, which is Breko. One window of 401 Lofts, 10 windows at 313 South High Street, which is APG Office Furnishings. And we had a carbon steel damage at Market and North High School. And I'm sorry, I did not have the most recent number. The most, most recent numbers, four people were arrested. Two were made by Akron Police Department, two were made by the Summit County Sheriff's Office. All four were male. One Akron charge was vandalism, one was criminal damage for Summit County. They charged both of theirs for riots because they can put them into jail. We can't people, put people in jail. So we had to charge them with misdemeanors.
Thank you so much, Chief Ball. I see that Councilwoman Samples has a comment.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Chief, this will be brief because I'll probably call you offline to talk about some things that probably can't be discussed online. But you just gave the numbers for the businesses who had windows knocked out of. I was trying to write the numbers down, but it seemed like more than 11 businesses had been affected. I'm, I'm not sure if that's correct. If you could send that to us in an email and possibly when you get a monetary amount of how much damage was caused to these businesses. And of those four people who were arrested, I heard you say maybe one mail was from Akron, where the other three from outside of Akron. And if so, where? I know one was from Sandusky. I saw that in the newspaper. That's my first question.
Okay, I don't have their, where they're from. I, the two arrests were made by Akron police officers and two arrests were made by Summit County Sheriff's deputies. But I don't have their, I don't have their specific information right in front of me.
Okay. And my other question is two more. The one from Chapel Hill. There was a lot of leads that were given just by people who had to be locked in stores up there. How are you guys monitoring that online chatter? Maybe something we need to talk about offline, but it seems like they were given descriptions of who these individuals were. And have we gotten to a point of arresting anyone?
Well, I'm, I'm not certain how far they've got in that, that investigation already. Obviously, that was just a short period ago. We do have a we have a unit, our intelligence unit monitors social media at all times. We've got analysts that are also looking at that information. As a matter of fact, we just added another member from the, of the Akron Police Department, a sergeant to the intelligence unit. And his, he will be starting on Monday so that we can figure out ways to grow that aspect of working off of intelligence and trying to get ahead of things. We get information from the mayor's office, who also have people that are looking for it. We certainly get notified by private citizens when they see some things. So those are the various ways right now.
Okay. And then my final question is, is there was no mention of Arlington Plaza on here. Arlington Plaza concerns me the most because first, we're not mentioning it. Second, it, secondly, I had several residents, not only just from Ward Five, but a couple of residents from Firestone Park that were on that, is it next-door neighbor site or whatever, send me links to the chatter of people saying that they were going to do these things at Arlington Plaza. And so I'm just trying to figure out what happened because I know there was an officer there at first. And then when the incident happened, it took a while for them to respond. So if you could find out and maybe we could have a talk on Friday of what happened from the time that someone who worked in the Plaza called 911 to them arriving there. I, I'd like to talk to you offline about what happened up there.
Okay, I will. Mr. Brown mentioned that to me earlier today. We did have a, we did have a team at that site for a long period of time, and there was no activity whatsoever. And then it moved to a, a check and patrol type of situation. But I'll get further details from those that were working that operation, and we can talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brown, did you have a comment?
Yes, just will put the thing, just something that I can also answer Mr. Samples' question. We also, um, we're in the ELC Emergency Operations Center. And Eric Hirsch, Staff, brought in monitoring social media for that type of information. And furthermore, we got a lot of information from Tara, I'm sorry, Mrs. Samples, Mrs. Somerville, I think Mr. and others. So we continue, we want that as it comes in. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you so much. And Councilwoman Samples, just to answer your question, Ellen did just send this to me from the mayor's office. Out of the four arrested, three were from Akron and one was from Sandusky. Uh, Councilwoman Imobian, did you have a question?
Not a question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Not a question. I just wanted to thank Chief Ball for that report. In light, in light of everything that's going on around the nation, it's nice to know that we didn't have any serious injuries or anything to really get out of hand. We appreciate that. And I'm assuming that you have a plan moving forward to be available when these things, because they may continue for several more weeks, I would imagine. I don't know.
Yes, we do. As a matter of fact, the, the next one is already starting to make its presence known on social media. That's an event on Wednesday that is expected to start at Grace Park with a march down to the, the police station. Although the la, last number I got was eight people were signed up for it. So but we are keeping our eye on it. And the plans that we are putting in place are running plans that are going to be very consistent and certainly adaptable should we need to add more members to it. It will help having 45 new police officers who started today to be able to, to add to that because they all will be working in patrol. But yeah, we're, we're not letting our foot up. We'll keep foot off the gas. We're going to keep our paying attention to all of it and hopefully we'll continue to have the kind of success that we had up till now. And then obviously too, a lot of that had to do with the, the people from Akron that, that were out there and you know, made their expressions known, obviously, but didn't, you know, didn't go past a, a certain point where they would have been breaking the law.
Okay, Linda, you're currently muted. We can't hear you.
I drove by Hard, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I drove by Hardisty Park yesterday and, and there's still quite a few people out there, but they all, they all appear to be civil and, you know, restraining themselves. So, so thank you very much and guys, be safe.
Thank you very much, and I'll pass that message along to our officers. We, they appreciate hearing it.
Thank you so much. Uh, Councilman Neil, I see your hand. Is there any other council members that had a question, a comment? Councilman Malik?
Councilman Neil, if you want to go ahead.
We're going to allow you, Councilman Malik, to go first and then we'll go back to Councilman Neil.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, Chief, you know, thank you for the report and, you know, I mentioned it earlier, but I just wanted to repeat it for the record. You know, I really appreciate the work that everyone in the police department did on Sunday at Hardisty Park. You know, the organizers and the pastors who were involved really appreciated the opportunity to have discussions beforehand before the event in order to make sure that, you know, there, there was an understanding of, of what, of what they were hoping to do and what, what, you know, EPD wanted in terms of safety. And thankfully, we're able to make sure that it was a situation which was safe for the protesters and safe for everyone in the neighborhood and in the area. And I really do appreciate it very much and have gotten just a lot of emails and messages and things like that of residents and of people who attended, just expressing appreciation not only to the police department, but also to various, you know, city workers who were there, the service department and, and other fire department and that kind of thing. You know, I know that, you know, also on, on Saturday, you know, in, in the evening there, in the early evening, it was a little bit of a tense situation I saw. But, but the one thing I saw was that, you know, you know, protests, you know, are an important way for folks to express themselves when they're in difficult situations like we're seeing. But you know, almost all of the folks were trying to do it in a positive and productive way, even, you know, even if it's sort of intense statements. And I, I saw at one point when someone did jump up on one of the, the service department Mack trucks. And almost every single person in the crowd is yelling at the person to get down and successfully got the person to get down. So you know, that, that was the kind of situation I saw. The one question I had was, there was an individual who I believe was clipped slightly by a, a truck on Market Street early in the afternoon on Saturday. And I think that the report today said it was under investigation. Is there any update on, on, on that truck?
The information that I've gotten so far is that the, the individual had been, been blocked in. The appearance was that it wasn't certainly purposeful or wouldn't reach to a level of a criminal offense by the driver of the vehicle. This is not comparable to, to a couple, couple instances nationally that have gotten a lot of attention. It was a, an act, appears to be an accident that was in his haste, in, in his haste to avoid being surrounded, his vehicle being surrounded. The person that was clipped by the car fell and I think he had a, a broken wrist. There, the investigation's going to continue. They'll see if there's more sources of video and make sure that we're, that they're not missing anything so that it is as thorough as possible. But at this point in time, it, it looks like it's just going to be an accident.
Thank you for that.
Councilman Swersky, then we'll move to Councilman Neil. Councilman Swersky, you're on mute.
Chief, I also was impressed. I was at the protest downtown in the afternoon. It was at evening one Saturday and at the evening one on Sunday. I was very, very impressed with the restraint and discipline and the control that the police department exhibited. I was very, very proud of them. I also think to some degree the results that, of the posture or the stance that the police took speak for themselves, spacing comparison to what's happened in other cities around the country and that our citizens mostly, mostly responded very, very well. They were also controlled and disciplined and focused on the mission that they had at hand, which was to bring to the attention of the country the problem of institutional racism. So, well done, police and well done citizens.
Thank you. Councilman Neil?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I,
Yeah, I just want to ask those who organize the different protests, has there been any thought on how we can engage them after? Because if if anyone's aware, I mean, you know, after all this energy is expressed in the protest, there's still work to do. And if these have the skill set to organize, it would be great to channel that energy in a positive way and getting them to work with those of us that are on council. Maybe we could find out which ones are in our wards or even form a special committee to plug organizers into to have further dialogue to help do some of the heavy lifting in the community.
Let me answer that one if I can. The mayor's office, actually, the mayor's talked to one of the organizers, Bradley Reeves, Barbara Allen Harston Park, offered an opportunity to have further conversation or further dialogue. Another protester that was organizing, we saw him downstairs downtown, had the same conversation. So we are starting that process in the mayor's office.
Thank you so much. Any other questions at this time? Sticking, hearing none. Thank you so much, Chief Ball, for the update and just thank you so much for your service and and all that you guys did over the weekend. Job well done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we appreciate it.
Before we move into the rest of our agenda, I do believe we have Tamika Rose, who's online with us, who is our health equity ambassador for the city of Akron. And she's going to talk about the direction in which we're trying to move as declaring racism as a public health crisis here in the city of Akron. Tamika?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Let me first say on record that my thoughts and prayers go out to George Floyd's family. Losing a family member is difficult enough and to see your family member have their life taken away is tragic and should never happen. Unfortunately, we know too often many black families have to witness this unjust action committed by a small segment of officers with no regard for people of color. And so one has to ask the question, why is it that white man that can kill dozens of children in a school walk away with from the crime scene, crime scene in handcuffs and an unarmed black man in handcuffs or an unarmed man in a routine traffic stop? But man or what black woman jogging or sitting in their own house watching TV can end up dead? We have to ask the question of why do African Americans suffer from hypertension, cardiovascular disease, diabetes, obesity, asthma, coronavirus and infant loss two to three times more than white Americans? Why? Why do African Americans make up twelve to thirteen percent of the population, but make up over sixty percent of the prison population? So as you all may know, I have been researching this question of why? And as it relates to the infant mortality and the black community? And professionals have termed the root cause as social determinants of health. So social determinants of health as it relates to is relates to your level of education, your housing situation, your ability to have on your own transportation and your lifestyle. Well, once you dig a little bit deeper, all of this points to systemic racism and the structure that certain Americans believe should continue. So yes, racism is a public health crisis. But before we can put words on paper to make ourselves feel as though we have done something for the black community in Akron by passing a resolution declaring racism as a public health crisis or urging Summit County Public Health to declare racism as a public health crisis, we should take a step back to see what we need to have changed as a result of this declaration. And I know that I thought about this over the weekend and then I soon thereafter learned that Mayor Horgan has already been working with council members, President Somerville and Councilwoman Tara Sample to co-sponsor an initial resolution to either declare racism as a public health crisis in the city of Akron or urging Summit County Public Health to declare racism as a public health crisis in Summit County. We need to do this thoughtfully. We don't need to do this as a knee jerk reaction. There's a lot of great things that we can put in place, but I would be remiss if I did not speak to you this evening and say that this is something that we will do in the coming weeks. But I wanted to be thoughtful. We have thought about this in our full term first birthday collaborative for infant mortality and we know that racism is a public health issue. It's just come to the right, you know, time here in 2020, unfortunately, with all of the craziness of the coronavirus of, you know, the killing of George Floyd. And I think it's just his death is the tip of the iceberg. It's just that one piece that just said, okay, we've had enough, but we can't just put words on paper. And so I just wanted to let the council know that this will be coming within the coming weeks because I wanted to be very thoughtful. I do not want it to be just words on paper and say that, oh, Akron passed this and yay, kumbaya. This is a lot of work. It's going to take a lot of work because this has been going on for decades, even centuries. And I offer any questions?
Tamika, thank you so much. At this time, are there any questions for Tamika at this time? Councilwoman Mobian, we can't hear you.
I'm glad. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm glad you are speaking out on this. It would certainly be helpful as the chair of the Health and Social Services Committee that we would have some dialogue as well because we know that all of these things, infant mortality, racism, social, all these social determinants of health, all of these are all interwoven and we need to discuss those. And I certainly would like to be at the table to brush out some of these things because, you know, it is a it is a serious challenge. And we keep talking about Elevate Akron and all these other things that we're doing. So we need to make sure that we are looking at all of the things we're doing and try to make a wider umbrella so that we are inclusive of those individuals who should be at the table. So please remember that I am the social services chair. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mobian.
I will make sure. Thank you.
Chief Ball, did you have a comment?
Yes, I did. And when Tamika was speaking, I realized I had missed an opportunity there and I know it's not my meaning. But there's not a member in law enforcement in the city of Akron that believes that what happened was right or just or close to it on any level. The murder charge was appropriate. It was disgusting and unimaginable to watch it and the fact that there were other police officers present that didn't intervene is hard to it just doesn't make sense. It's hard to imagine. And I promise that 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 would never happen in the city of Akron. Our men aren't trained that way. They're not led that way. And it was it was heartbreaking for the member, the members of the Akron Police Department to have had to have seen that too. So so we understand and I want to make sure that unequivocally, there's no different message out there. Just because we have to guard the police station doesn't mean we're the enemy of people that are justifiably in every way upset about what happened in Minneapolis. I just wanted to put that out.
Thank you so much, Chief Ball. Councilman Neil?
Thank you, ma'am, too. Ms. Rose, thank you for bringing that in. I'm sure many are aware that Franklin County has already passed it. Columbus is passing theirs today, introducing theirs into their council and passing theirs today. And I agree with Councilwoman Mobian. Cleveland has been having dialogue in their community about this since March. I want to I want to put this before our council because when we make this declaration, just like when we pass the National Day of Racial Healing Resolution, and at that time, it was stated that unlike any other resolution, we have to live up to this. Passing a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis is not just putting something on paper. If I can give use this as an example, when we declared a public health crisis, a pandemic, that means we put the same energy, the same resources behind this pandemic as we have done with COVID nineteen. So that means when we bring legislation into council for racial equity training for council, there's no debate. We pass it so that we can be educated to move on an issue so important as this. This is not something to be played with lightly. This is not a political statement. This is literally life or death. So I again, I commend this Rose for bringing this, but understand we're calling racism a pandemic, a crisis. So that means we put the same energy behind it as we have with COVID nineteen. And I would love to do this the right way because in Columbus, they've had over eighty companies sign. The CEO from Suma has released a statement today about declaring racism a public health crisis. And I know the chamber is working on something. So this is something that's not for a political statement. This is a commitment from this council and from the administration to change this injustice that has been a part of this community and this nation for since its existence. So I look forward to work with everyone on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Neil. Councilman Malik?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, thank Ms. Rose, you know, this is work. Obviously, your work kind of exemplifies the fact that this has been an ongoing process over many years. And I think, you know, all of the people on these screens have been participating in different conversations and in different ways. And and like we're exemplified by the fact that like the MCAP program that I think we're going to vote on a little bit later is a part of improving minority representation in our contracting, right? And, you know, to Chief Ball's point, this is, you know, the folks in our police department really are committed to sending a clear message about this. But at the same time, we have an ability always to improve on all of these issues. And it's not just about policing, it's about housing and it's about infant mortality and it's about poverty and it's about education. And so I, you know, I hope that this is a jumping off point, this this declaration is a jumping off point that we can all look and see what are the things that we can start moving forward and policies in each different issue area, whether it's policing or whether it's housing, to continue to move forward and build on the progress that so many people have been working on. Because while it is a moment in time, there is some new urgency that we are, I think, are all feeling.
Thank you, Councilman Malik. Councilwoman Mobian, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I just want to thank, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to thank Chief Ball for saying what he just said about the feelings that the officers had in witnessing this. I think it goes a long way for you for him to say that so that the public knows that there's just no room for this kind of behavior anywhere in law enforcement. And I thank you very much for saying that.
Thank you so much. Councilman Fusco?
Thank you, President Somerville. Excuse me. I'd like to thank Council Representative Samples and President Somerville as well as the mayor and the administration for beginning this conversation. In terms of the police department, we and the community hold them to a higher standard and we should. We should do that. But as stated, I believe that the majority, the vast majority of police officers, not only in Akron, but throughout the United States, they get into policing for the right reasons. However, though, we've got to address the ones that aren't in it for the right reasons. And I'd like to thank again Tamika Rose and and these discussions. I believe that it's okay, but it's very difficult for white people to talk about privilege and for white people to talk about, you know, a number of things whenever it comes to race. And 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 I think no more silence. We have to have these conversations. We've had the conversations in the past. There's been a number of initiatives, a number of those initiatives. However, we've got to continue those. And this is another another example of something that can be done. However, we are at a tipping point, given what's been going on. And so I stand ready as well as I'm sure all my council members here to work on this and make sure that at the end of the day, we come up with something that that will benefit all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Swirsky? Councilman Swirsky, you're on mute.
I agree. I agree with what Mrs. Mobian said, expressing gratitude to the chief for all of the leadership they just showed this weekend, of course, but making a statement like that, that raises the bar for all of all of us, really. And I'm just think that the citizens really wanted to hear something like that from the chief and I think they will be very pleased and satisfied that his remarks were so on point in condemning what happened in another city, but but also in providing the kind of role modeling, as he said, they're trained and they're led in a certain way and he's exemplifying that. Thank you, chief.
Thank you so much, Councilman Swirsky. Are there any additional comments or questions at this time? If not, Tamika Rose, want to thank you again for all of your hard work and research you've done thus far. And we look forward to being able to come back and present something more further to council. So thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will now move back into our agenda. Can we please have a motion to approve the minutes from our previously held meeting? Councilman Fusco? Councilman Fusco, you're on mute. I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the minutes from the May eighteenth meeting?
So we have a motion to approve there, a second by Councilman Malik.
Yes, so moved.
We have a second. Roll call?
Baylor?
I think you're on mute. Councilwoman Baylor, you're on mute?
Aye. Thank you. Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kamer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittrick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Amobian?
Councilwoman Amobian, you're muted?
Aye.
Thank you. Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swirsky?
Aye.
They passed thirteen to zero.
At this time, we'll move into our old business.
Item number one, ordinance authorizing an amendment to the twenty nineteen Consolidated Plan and Community Development Home Program to include the Community Development Block Grant and Emergency Solutions Grant Program, COVID nineteen stimulus funds as an eligible activity, authorizing the Director of Planning and Urban Development to enter into all necessary agreements for the operation and term of the activities and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Hardy?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. As you know, we presented this last week and this represents legislation authorizing us to move forward with our plan, our budget plan for the emergency CDBG and ESG allocations for COVID nineteen response.
Thank you so much. At this time, are there any comments or questions from any council members as relates to this piece? Councilman Fusco?
I'd like to make a motion for suspension of the rolls with a favorable report.
So we have a motion on the floor. Can we please get a second by Councilwoman Connor? I think Councilwoman Connor, you're on mute.
A second. Sorry.
Thank you. We have a second roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
At this time, are there any comments or questions from any council members as relates to this piece? Councilman Fusco?
I'd like to make a motion for suspension of the rolls with a favorable report.
So we have a motion on the floor. Can we please get a second by Councilwoman Connor? I think Councilwoman Connor, you're on mute.
A second, sorry.
Thank you. We have a second roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kamar?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Sworsky?
Aye.
This ordinance passes thirteen to zero. Item number two, ordinance authorizing the purchase of fourteen seventy-four Copley Road and fourteen sixty-one Copley Road for the land banking project and declaring an emergency.
Thank you so much. I know that, Councilman Neal, you had asked for time on this issue, so wanted to start with you if you had any further comments as related to this piece.
Well, the request is still for time. We had a meeting on Friday, scheduling a, coordinating a community meeting for all those who have concern. So the request is for time.
I did just kind of want to make a comment. Copley Road, for far too long, has been ignored, it's been looked over. The best thing that happened to Copley Road really was Better Block and Great Streets. Better Block and Great Streets really brought hope to business owners, patrons, and residents on Copley Road. We got them to the table, they were excited, they gave us ideas. For once, they really saw an opportunity to make Copley Road, once again, a thriving business district in the African-American community. So really, on tonight, honestly, moving forward with this project is extremely important because, number one, it lets those who are around the table know that we weren't just listening, but we actually heard what they were saying. And this is a project that the community really wants to see move forward. We've actually received probably close to sixty letters of support that were submitted through our public comic period time. And what we'll do, because I think it's very important, I do want council members to be able to hear exactly what business owners are saying, what people in the community are saying. But before we move into that, I am going to ask that we actually vote on this piece on tonight. But I do want to open it up for other council members in case there are some other questions. Councilman Fusco, I think, had a comment.
Yes, thank you, President Somerville. I've benefited from, from attending Better Block events, as well as planning and being an active participant in a number of the, the Better Block events throughout town. And, and I know that it's, it's, it's a jumping off point in terms for, for a community. Oftentimes, we'll see the CDCs are formed after that, we'll often see those neighborhoods that have benefited from the Better Block movement, if you will, move forward. I know that Ellis Brinson, who was basically the head of the, the Better Block for Copley Road last year, had began this process by contacting back in May of last year, Patrick Bravo from the land bank, in terms of making inquiry about this particular property. And, and so I know that this has been discussed and, and brought forward through some discussions. And so with that, I would, I would support this, the idea of passage. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Fusco. Councilwoman Amobian?
I guess my, my main question has to do, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, my main question has to do with, as we move forward with these projects, I don't hear of any other ward where we're not working with the ward, the elected representative that the people have elected for the ward. So my concern is this, and I do agree that we need to work with the merchants and all the businesses along those different quarters, regardless of where the ward is. But I think it has to be done in conjunction with the person that they elected. And I'm not really sure what the rush is. If we have all this support, and the council member who represents that ward, if he could be brought on board, I'm not really sure why we're having all these meetings without including that person. That concerns me greatly. The other thing that we keep talking about individuals who are helping to move the street forward, and these individuals don't live in the city, and they don't live in Ward Four. And it's important that we work with those individuals who are there, who would like to be a part of moving their ward in the direction they want to go. So I, I'm troubled by that. And if you could show me some examples, or an example, of where we have taken something in another ward and been pushing so hard to do it without the ward council person being on board.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Amobian. Councilwoman Connor?
I just want to say, having spent a lot of time working grassroots in Ward Ten, if you stop this momentum and slow it down, you know, you're talking about Better Block was a year ago, they met for probably a year planning it. You know, the longer you wait, the more you risk losing that momentum. And when you lose that momentum, you dishearten a lot of people who've been to all the meetings already, wrote all the comments, supported all the letters, and you don't want to lose that momentum going on. If, if we delay a lot on this and it gets defeated, or it gets pushed back and pushed back and pushed back, and you lose that momentum, you could be as much as ten years trying to revive it again, and that concerns me.
Thank you so much, Councilman Connor. Councilman Neal, I do see your hand.
Yes, I'd like to make a few statements first. We have a lot of new council people on here. There's a reason why you were elected, and that is because you, you represent your ward. Because if you do not represent your ward, you are the only one that the constituents can directly impact by voting you out or even calling for a recall. Now, in regards to the comment about investments on Copley Road, I think it's unfair because, you know, I wonder what, what Mr. Woodrow Nash would think when he moved his Rage Gallery there just a few couple of years ago. I wonder what the gentleman that built the Little Caesars within the last eight to nine years would think, investing over a half a million dollars in a building that he doesn't even own. I wonder about, you know, we had the King's Laundry mat that was there, that was burned down because of electrical fire. And when we talk about racism, be it a public health crisis, had a person that wanted to rebuild on the exact same spot, the exact same platform, but the bank said that the neighborhood was under value. I wonder what, you know, we had CVS just buy into the neighborhood, we had Handel's Ice Cream, which wasn't supported by the community, but then a new T, uh, PC mobile place moved in there. So you say no investment, there's been much investment, repros right there at the corner, right as you enter the ward, the Pizza Hut. We had Pastor Norris purchase the Maple Valley Dry Cleaners. Ladies and gentlemen, you weren't elected to represent Ward Four. I was. I was not elected to represent Ward One, Ward Eight. I wasn't elected to represent Ward Ten, Ward Six, Ward Seven, none of those, Ward Three, Ward Five. I was represented to represent Ward Four. If, and so I say that to say, there is a plan for Ward Four. On, on one of the days that they had the meeting, I found out it, out of, about it by a whim, I sent an email to the mayor's office, asking why would there be such a meeting planned when they knew I would be at the national conference in San Antonio? I asked if the meeting could be rescheduled. It wasn't. And let me just be one hundred percent transparent, ladies and gentlemen. When we talk about racism being a public health crisis, it talks about the way us changing the way we do our politics, as Mr. Malik said, the way we look at our education, our business, everything. This right here is, I, I, you know, I'm shocked, I've asked for a meeting with the planners of this event, haven't had it yet. And when I say that, I'm talking about the, from, from within the city, the mayor. Mr. Hardy and I met Friday. Miss Somerville, you were on that call. He is supposed to get back with the mayor. And again, let me say this. The, the organization, the black organization that has served this city for over fifty years, that tried to buy that building, they wanted to charge them forty thousand dollars. Now, all of a sudden, legislation comes into the city, saying that the city's going to purchase the building. After we're laying people off, cutting services, the city is going to purchase the building that an organization that has served this community for over fifty years was willing to buy, so that they could provide services for seniors and for youth. The city was going to purchase it and then give it to a CDC. Now, if you don't see something wrong with that, please, this, this needs more discussion. This is why I've scheduled a meeting, because many of those people who were asked to sign those letters called me, and when they found out the real deal, they were disgusted. So there's no urgency here. I've met with Mr. Hardy on Friday. I'm supposed to hear back from the mayor, I'm waiting to have, and scheduling a meeting, a ward meeting, so that those who are interested in the, what's proposed can come. And let, and let me say this, just to wrap up.
Yeah, just, just a couple more minutes, Councilman Neal.
Thank you. Just to wrap up, the proposed Resource Center is not opposed to be in the community. There are plenty of buildings that they can purchase or share to put the Resource Center. One is the building that's right, right in the Better Block area that the black firefighters own. They can share that spot. There's a building right beside black firefighters that's for sale. But why would we not give, not give a building, allow an organization that has served this community for fifty years, why wouldn't we allow them to purchase that building?
Councilman Neal, you, you've had your five minutes, so we appreciate that, and thank you. And, and just one thing, this, this was not just one meeting that you were out of town for, we're talking about a series of meetings, mini-meetings, that you were invited to each and every one of those meetings.
That's incorrect.
And you did not show up.
That's incorrect.
And not only was there a series of meetings, the only meeting that you did have was a meeting to try to stop Better Block.
That is incorrect.
So again, you had opportunities as the council person to be at the table, you still have an opportunity as the council person to sit at the table. Pastor Nelson of Progressive Alliance has done nothing but tried to reach an olive branch to you, give you an opportunity to sit at the table so that you, as the council person, can decide possibly what programming will actually look like in the Community Resource Center. You've had every opportunity, Councilman Neal.
Better chair?
So at this time, what we're going to do is I'm going to ask the clerk to actually read in all of the statements and letters that were received by business owners, people who live in the community, people who were involved in the process. Thank you. Clerk?
Dear President Somerville, I am writing to support Progressive Alliance CDC in the creation and establishment of a Community Resource Center at the former VFW located on Copley Road. The programming and activities planned for the Community Resource Center have been for some time and are yet needed along Copley Road and Ward Four. A prime example of this programming would be the addition of a police substation added to the VFW to increase relationships and safety for the area merchants and members of our close community. Thank you for your consideration and interest in helping us to enrich and restore this once vibrant area to its fullest potential. Sincerely, Pauline Clark. Also, James Reddick, Rhonda Stone, Tamika Lewis, Karen Reddick, Reverend Pamela Thomas Clayton, Heather Cook, Robbie Connolly, Deborah Benson Berry, Mala Walker, Deborah Berry, Courtney Turner, Deanna Gaskins, Julie Harris, Louisa Ivory, Ward Four resident, Barbara Mitchell, Barbara Mitchell King, Eric Mitchell, Don Robinson, Ward Four resident, Yvonne Shai Daniels, Eric Garrett, Jr., Robert Daniels, Jr., Brandon, I'm sorry, the last name is not such a well, Elwood, Tim, also unable to read that last name, Ken Sims, shot, Mrs. Shai Moore, Thomas Harris, Jr., Dennis Whitman, Lobester Gerald, Bishop Stanley Robinson, Chavette Gerald, Ruth Gerald, Fourth Board resident, Sydney Myers, Jennifer Spain, Ward Four resident, Carol Miller, Ward Four resident, Sean Ross, Ward Four resident, Ashley D. Leo Lee, sorry, I can't read that last name, Beverly Ernest, Fourth Board resident, Thomas Low, Dorothy Ernest, James Ernest, Cameron Campbell, Rita Williams, Valerie P. B., Valerie Borgley, Eugene Porter, Carmen Wingo, Derwin, Richard Johnson, Alyssa Garrett, Rashawn Garrett, Ginger St. Barbara Johnson, Michelle Wingo, Ally McIntosh, Amanda, Michelle Coleman. Sorry, some of these are signatures, I'm not sure if I have their name correctly. I also have, Dear President Somerville and members of council, I am writing to urge your support of the Progressive Alliance CDC utilizing the former Copley Road VFW to establish a Community Resource Center. As a lifelong resident of the Fourth Board and business owner, I am thrilled at the possibilities this opportunity will bring to our community. Over the years, I've seen the decline of the Fourth Board in the Copley Road area. Endeavors like this are exactly what we need in our community. The possibility of having a police substation is greatly needed in our community. As crime continues to skyrocket in our area, we need a permanent police presence to build relationships with members of the community and respond to crimes as expeditous, expeditishly as possible. I support the vision of the Progressive Alliance CDC and hope that you will too, respectfully, Kevin Brown. Dear Madam President and members of council, I am writing in support of the Progressive Alliance, Alliance CDC creating a Community Resource Center at the Beacon VFW located on Copley Road. As a resident of the Fourth Board and former law enforcement official, I am excited about the possibilities this could bring to our neighborhood, specifically a police substation. It is well known that the Copley Road area has been rife with crime and blight for a long time now. Businesses are declining and crime is increasing. Opportunities like this are exactly what are needed to get our community headed in the right direction. I hope that all members of council will support this much-needed endeavor that has the potential to improve our neighborhood, increase safety, and lower crime in our community. Thank you for your time and consideration to this issue and for all that you do to serve our great city. God bless, John Peak, Senior. To the members of Akron City Council, it's been brought to my attention that an opportunity has presented itself to advance the growth of the Copley Road community. There were roundtable community symposiums presented by the Akron Beacon Journal. It identifies the many resources that Akron has. Akron has many resources that many more people could utilize. A physical location will be a follow-up to the Better Block Initiative. I support the placement of a Resource Center on Copley Road. Jackie Isley. A physical location will be a follow up to the Better Block Initiative. I support the placement of a resource center on Copley Road. Jackie Easley.
My name is Fenet Morris and I'm a business owner at Studio WNYH thirteen forty Copley Road, Maple Valley Business District. And I'm emailing about the new resource center, hopefully coming soon to our area. I opened my business twenty nineteen on Copley Road, right after the Great Streets came through. That was such an awesome event and great for the community as a whole. After that event moved to this area because Great Streets painted a picture for the community that moving forward, I wanted to be a part of. And also, the West Side is where I grew up. I graduated from Buckdill. Great Streets gave hope to the businesses and the community, and I'm looking forward to more of that. Copley Road needs an anchor, and I truly believe a resource center is the perfect project for the job. Something like this says to the businesses and community that change is coming and we need change. I also believe a resource center in an area like Copley Road, Maple Valley will set the precedence for other centers and businesses to come. Thank you for your time in reading this email, and I hope to see the resource center opening in our community soon. Fenet Morris.
Dear Councilwoman Somerville, I am a resident of the Fourth Board. I live close to Copley Road and the former VFW. Recently, I was made aware of the Progressive Alliance CDC plans to form a resource center and police substation at the former VFW property. I hope that when this issue comes before council, that it will have your full support. As you may know, the VFW used to be a vibrant and well-maintained property. I, over the years, have attended several events there. It is sad to see what it has become, but I'm happy to hear that there are positive plans for it in the future. I fully support the Progressive Alliance CDC. I strongly strongly believe that they will be a positive force in our community to help turn things around. For years, the Fourth Board has declined and issues of safety have become more prevalent. The idea of having a police substation in such a visible part of our ward is extremely comforting. We need a greater police presence, and I'm confident that this would be a step in the right direction. I hope that you and all members of council will support this endeavor. Thank you for your consideration to this matter. Sincerely, Larry Nelson Senior.
Dear Council President Margot Somerville, we have attached a letter in support for your legislation. For the city to purchase fourteen seventy-four Copley Road and fourteen sixty-one Copley Road to provide a Community Resource Center. It is time to move our community forward with actionable steps that will increase opportunity for success. We have to set aside politics, our differences and ego to move the people forward. Let's do this together by supporting a yes vote for the people. EJ Brunson. There's an attachment to that one. Dear legislators and Mayor Horgan, I submit the following document to support legislation. For the city of Akron to purchase fourteen seventy-four Copley and fourteen sixty-one Copley for a Community Resource Center for West Akron. If you have any questions or need any additional information, please feel free to contact me. West Akron has always been near and dear to our hearts. The desire to see progress in West Akron is what motivated us to purchase the former Maple Valley Library to ensure mental health services were accessible to neighborhood residents. That initiative and listening to the needs of the community is what brought brought forth successful collaborative initiatives. Copley Road, Better Block, Akron to Akron, West Akron, and Reimagine Care Part Task Force. Reasons we are supporting the legislation. The Copley Road Better Block Initiative provided a temporary Community Resource Center room with a police substation, Great Streets voter registration, Veterans Table, Job and Family Services, et cetera. Which was pulled by residents to have a substantial value for the neighborhood and requested to remain permanent. A major obstacle for development in the district is that properties are landlocked or difficult to acquire. There is concern from residents, businesses, and community leaders that substantial initiatives that generally evolved from a better block will not be produced in West Akron. COVID nineteen has increased challenges and the need for close proximity services for businesses, churches, and residents in West Akron. A Community Resource Center could provide a safeguard measure for residents who currently live in the neighborhood against gentrification by ensuring a physical location to accommodate their needs. Statement of support. As an advocate for the community and someone that has worked with many of you, I ask for you to vote in favor of this legislation. I believe it is urgent, necessary, and in the best interest of the people to pass legislation requested by the City of Akron Office of Integrated Development Office. Offered by City Council President Margot Somerville to approve the purchase of property. Fourteen seventy-four Copley Road and fourteen sixty-one Copley Road to provide a future Community Resource Center for the people of West Akron. City Council President Somerville, I am pleased to support Progressive Alliance CDC and their planned establishment of a Community Resource Center at the former VFW on Copley Road and Ward Four. I am lending my support as both the board chair of the Progressive Alliance CDC and a resident of Ward Four for the past five years. I'm excited about the planning, the planned programming, which includes improving merchant and patron safety along the Copley Road. Along Copley Road with a police substation, a coffee shop gathering space, workforce workforce development training, a credit union, and other community needs. I am the Director of Community Engagement and Economic Development at Kent State University's main campus. I am pleased to also inform you that I was successful in getting a commitment from the Assistant Dean for KSU Center for Architectural and Environmental Design, Dr. Bill Willoughby. To volunteer class hours of KSU architectural students and faculty from the center to help with the VFW building interior space redesign and exterior landscaping. We hope that Akron City Council will vote to approve the Progressive Alliance CDC Community Resource Center. The creation of this new asset and Ward Four will positively impact the lives of Ward Four residents and improve safety for merchants and patrons. Frequenting Copley Road, which should lead to merchants' business growth. Thank you for your consideration, Reverend Kelvin Berry.
Thank you so much. Um and and also, just one other thing too. I want to thank Mark Greer. Who is the coordinator for Great Streets, who also has been working with all the businesses on Copley Road. He canvassed his businesses and really spoke to them about this project. And there was not one business on Copley Road that did not want to see this project move forward or see its importance. Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you. I just want to um. Mention that we are seeing investment. All over Akron, not only financial, but but people lending their time, people that were raised in in neighborhoods. People that are most familiar with the neighborhoods that they were raised in. They're they're back in that commitment to that neighborhood financially, as well as with time. And we're seeing that all over the city. And this is an example of that. Uh we're also seeing that um. That the sixty letters we we had just heard or so of commitment, uh again, this started last year. The these are, uh, community development block grant funds are gonna be utilized for this acquisition. And um and Copley Road certainly needs this investment. With that, I would recommend a suspension of the rules with a favorable report.
We do have a motion on the floor, Councilman Swersky.
It was raised, Madam Chair.
Okay, hold on, we'll have it. We're gonna get a second on the motion, Councilman Swersky.
I'm gonna second the motion. I think there's been a lot of discussion. There's been a lot of involvement in that community. We just heard from them. There is strong support to have this project move forward. I think there can be continuing dialogue. This purchase does not shut off any further dialogue. Um I would just hate to see a good thing get talked to death. Let's move forward. I second Councilman Fusco's motion.
Thank you so much. So we we do have a motion on the floor and we do have a a second uh roll call.
Question.
Councilman Neil?
Yeah. This is, uh, I wanna share a couple of things. About two years ago, had a uh situation in my ward with open pantry. Community was demanding that it be shut down. Hundreds of people were demanding that it be shut down. I had a community meeting. Open pantry is now a beacon on that corner, stabilizing that corner. Again, I'm the councilman in this ward. Ms. Somerville, if you wanna, uh, I I wanna state to everyone on here, I am not opposed to a resource center. I'm the one that brought legislation in seven years ago, stating that we needed a mobile resource center. Worked that legislation with, at that time, Lieutenant Charles Brown. And members from the womb and the Police Department in Kent State. I am not opposed to a resource center. What I am opposed to. Is the city purchasing a building and taking it away from an organization that has served this community for fifty years. I hear Councilman Fusco and others speaking. You have not, you don't live in the ward, you don't walk that ward. I live Ward Four. I'm invested in Ward Four, not just with my home. But my wife and I own investment property. In the ward. We're well vested in the ward. In that ward, as I stated, the black firefighters have offered their building as a resource center. So that we can still honor an organization that has served this community for fifty years. And they could provide services that are lacking for seniors and for youth. I don't know how many of you have gone to a McDonald's and seen men playing chess in McDonald's. Some of the McDonald's managers kicked them out. They have no other place to go. Outcast is gonna make that available. There isn't a youth center right now. Outcast is gonna make that available. And they're open to the police having their place there, not opposed to any of that. What I am opposed to is blocking. And again, since we're talking about racism being a public health crisis, let's look at our politics. Blocking.
Councilman Neil, you have about one more minute.
Well, thank you. Blocking an organization that has served this community for fifty years. And last but not least, I would not disrespect any of you. By voting against something where your residents, if they don't like your decision, could vote you out. If our residents do not like my decision, they can vote me out. I'm sir, I've served my community. There is a plan. The resource center could be there. The police could have their substation. But doing this right here would exile an organization that was willing to purchase the building.
Councilman Neil, thank you. Thank you so much. A- and just to be very clear, the community organization in which you are referring to, before we even got to this moment in time. We reached out to that community organization. And that community organization is not in a financial position, not only to obtain the building, but to maintain the building for years to come. We have reached out to that organization. We have reached out to that organization. They are able to utilize space within this Community Resource Center. They're able to do programming. They are currently, if wished to, they can work with Mark Greer. Or we're actually gonna try and find them some space that's maybe more affordable for them along the Copley Road corridor. So at this time, we do have a motion, a second on the floor. We're gonna ask for a roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor? Connor?
Sorry, aye.
Thank you. Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittrick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neil?
No.
Amobian?
No.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye.
This item passes. Eleven to two.
Thank you. We're now moving to new legislation.
Item number one, offered by President Somerville, ordinance authorizing a conditional use to construct an oversized detached garage at twenty-six twenty-six Nesbit Avenue and declaring an emergency.
This item will be scheduled for a public hearing.
Item number two, offered by President Somerville, ordinance authorizing a conditional use to establish an office use in a residence district at four hundred South Portage Path and declaring an emergency.
This item will be scheduled for a public hearing.
Item number three, offered by President Somerville, ordinance authorizing a conditional use to establish a zero lot line townhouse and single family residential development at the southwest corner of Mull Avenue and South Hawkins Avenue and declaring an emergency.
This item will also be referred for a public hearing.
Item number four, offered by President Somerville, ordinance approving the sale of seven eighty-seven Ruth Avenue to Sharon Butler McCray, determining said property is not needed for public use and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hardy?
Madam President, forgive me, I'm not as, uh, I'm not familiar with this particular piece.
Mr. Hardy, do you want us to take time on it?
Yes, if we could, that would be nice. Thank you.
Can can we get a a motion for time, Councilman Fusco?
A motion to refer time.
Um, and can we get a second by Councilman McHittrick?
Second that motion.
Roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittrick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neil? Neil?
Aye.
Thank you. Amobian?
Aye.
Samples? Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye.
Time will be taken. Item number five, offered by President Somerville, ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee after publicly advertising for bids to enter into a contractor contracts to convert the existing tennis courts. Located at Waters Park into pickleball courts, authorizing the expenditure of funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hardy?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. I am familiar with this one. Uh, what you have before you is the first of uh what we hope to be a healthy amount of uh park improvements coming through as it relates to our miscellaneous parks budget. This particular item would transform the existing tennis courts at Waters Park into six pickleball courts. Pickleball is a um a sport that has been around since the mid nineteen sixties. It's taken off in recent times, uh, really for folks of all ages. It's a it's a much more intense and smaller version of uh tennis and uh ping pong, i- if if you can imagine that. And uh, interestingly enough, we have had, over the last three years, an incredible amount of interest within Akron for pickleball courts. We have a lot of folks that are going to Canton and or going to Stowe for the organized leagues. And the most interesting thing I would note uh before taking questions, Madam Chair, is that uh by improving Waters Park in this way and transforming the courts into the six pickleball courts. We will actually have enough courts in one area to be able to host league sanctioned uh tournaments, uh when, of course, it's appropriate uh for uh pickleball. There is a U.S. Pickleball Association. There's a a pretty robust organization around this, and so we see it as a as a growth opportunity for active recreation within our city.
Thank you. Councilman Lombardo?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And uh, Mr. Hardy, I appreciate that um coming into the ward. You answered a few of my questions that I had written down as far as leagues going on. Um, can you tell me the age range of leagues? And is this something that um? You know, I I couldn't help advertise in the schools nearby?
Absolutely. So we would welcome that help and support, Councilman. Um, one of the things that I have learned uh about pickleball in the last year coming uh to this decision. For Waters Park is that it really is a sport that can be enjoyed by all ages. So a lot of the leagues do have, uh, for example, seniors, uh, as well as folks, uh, college age. It appears to be more of an adult uh sport, but one of the things we do hope to utilize these courts for is our summer camps. So as we, hopefully next summer, have a more normal summer camp environment, we hope to be able to use these courts for the kids as well. But it seems to be a very popular sport among adults as well as active seniors.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to some lessons.
Thank you. Councilwoman Connor?
Is there a plan to maybe do um maybe a each ward a demo of pickleball so that to promote people's interest? And to kind of let people know and maybe possibly a day of lessons or something, just to get people understanding what the sport's all about?
Yes, so I would say that um, uh, I don't ever want to speak for Melvin Blake, but uh, Melvin, who is our wonderful coordinator of sports and athletics. Would tell you that this is only the beginning. We we set up this this uh, the center at Waters Park to really get the sport going. But as many of you ward council uh men and women know, we do have a fair amount of tennis courts across the city. That uh have long since seen better days. And so what we want to do is obviously work with you all to identify in the community, to identify those that need to be refurbished. But those where tennis really isn't the sport. Uh, one of the things that I have learned again is that it's very cost effective. For the city to transform a tennis court into pickleball courts. And so, uh, you know, if that is something that catches on for a given neighborhood or something that you would like, we can absolutely take a look at that, especially if you have. especially if you have an existing tennis court in your ward.
More than willing to volunteer. And next.
Thank you.
Understood.
Councilwoman Amobian?
Mr. Hardy, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Can tennis and pickleball coexist?
It, it actually can. I, I would have to get back to you as to how we're striping the, the courts at Waters. I, I don't believe at Waters, we're going to be able to do both. I think it's going to be truly a pickleball facility. But I do believe that as we look to perhaps a, a single tennis court at a park somewhere in a neighborhood, that there is a way that we could actually draw the lines and construct the, the netting, if you will, to allow for both to be utilized. And, and I'll look into that and get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Councilman Fusco?
Suspension of the rules with a favorable report.
We have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second by Councilwoman Samples?
Second.
We have a second roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
I'm sorry, aye.
Thank you. Freeman?
We have a party pickleball, aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye to pickleball.
This ordinance passes 13 to 0. Item number six offered by President Somerville. Ordinance accepting various interests in real property located on or around Canton Road to facilitate the completion of the Sum 91 Canton Road Market Street project, authorizing the Director of Public Service or his designee to enter into related agreements and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hardy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. This is property acquisition relating to the, the project at the intersection of East Market and, and Route 91, otherwise known as Canton Road. So it's again, we, we've brought in, we've brought, we have brought some of these to you before. This is a continuation of that.
Thank you so much. At this time, are there any comments or questions? Councilman Fusco?
Motion for suspension of the rules with a favorable report.
We have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second by Councilman Freeman?
Like second that motion?
Roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye.
This ordinance passes 13 to 0. Item number seven offered by President Somerville. Ordinance authorizing the transfer of certain vacant properties to neighboring property owners that meet the criteria of the Mota Own program, approving the specifications of the Mota Own program, determining that eligible properties are not needed for public use and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. At this time, we're actually going to have our grants manager, Melinda Sampson, present on this. Oh, sorry, John Valley. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council President Somerville, members of council. I'm real excited about the Mota Own program. This program will stabilize neighborhoods by transferring vacant properties to adjacent property owners who, who are more likely to take care of the land next to their home. Well-maintained vacant lots will help improve the neighborhood character and appearance. It'll reduce the city of Akron cost with maintaining these properties and will be returning these properties to the tax roll and increase property values. I want to thank Mayor Horgan for his support. He has stated that properties in the Mota Own program are no longer needed by the city of Akron, which will ensure that these properties will be main, well-maintained moving forward. This has been a collaborative effort with the Department of Neighborhood Assistance and the Office of Integrated Development under the direction of James Hardy and Abraham Westcott. For several years, we have discussed similar programs. The two, the two departments met several times earlier this year and have come up with the Mota Own. Deputy Service/ Neighborhood Assistance Director Yefrania Lash did quite a bit of research, what other communities were doing. He reached out to St. Louis, Memphis, Philadelphia, Columbus. And we have a little flavor of all those in our Mota Own program. The Department Neighborhood Assistance Staff mailed out 960 letters and packets recently to introduce the Mota Own program. And these 960 letters represent the 250 vacant lots that were selected for 2020. Residents will then return their application to the Office of Integrated Development. The cutoff date is June 15th. Once selected, the Department of Neighborhood Assistance Code Compliance Inspectors will follow up with inspections during the summer mow season. During the week of April 2nd, Office of Integrated Development and Department Neighborhood Assistant Inspectors visited over 15, 1,400 vacant city lots. They entered pictures and lot descriptions into a handheld app. This exercise helped us identify several hundred lots that were heavily wooded and many with difficult terrain. And these were lots that we cannot mow. We now have a list of 1,169 vacant lots. We have selected the 250 for the 2020 Mota Own. And this will make mowing the vacant lots a more manageable project. And I just briefly want to talk about the applicant eligibility. All applicants must own the contiguous property and priority may be given to the owner occupant of the contiguous property. The applicant shall not be delinquent on any real estate taxes. And the applicant shall not have property maintenance nuisance or building code violations. With that, I will entertain any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Valley. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Councilman Lombardo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Valley. One question in regards to adjacent properties, so same side of street, right next door. This wouldn't apply to anybody maybe across the street.
If nobody contiguous or adjacent was interested, this could apply to somebody within 300 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Malik?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Valley. I really appreciate, you know, it seems like a really well thought out program. And I think I saw a great response when it was announced. You mentioned some of those wooded lots. And I know that, that someone had reached out from one of them in Ward 8 backing up at Center Metro Park. Is there, what is the thought on sort of how that those wooded lots would hopefully be used? Would those be available for sale? Or do we want to sort of keep those when they're non-buildable?
Well, we, we could take a look down the road. And actually, we, we have selected the 250 because we surely don't want to overwhelm ourselves in year one. And once the June 15th deadline occurs, we'll take a look. We'll see how many adjacent property owners are interested, how many applicants did come in. And then we could make some adjustments because we have heard from several dozen residents that do live right next door to a vacant city property, but they weren't part of the original 250.
Thank you, Mr. Valley.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Amobian?
Yeah, Mr. Valley, thank you for the information. I mean, I have a couple of questions. If you have two individuals, a lot between two homeowners, and they both want the property, do you split it in half like we've done before? Or how do we do that?
Well, we mailed out, I'm sorry, I thought you were done with the question. Go ahead.
Yeah, and they both have agreed to alternate mowing the lawn or whatever the case may be.
We do that now with our Lots for Little program, but with the Mota Own, we decided against that. That's why there were 960 letters and packets that went out to the 250 properties. Most of them do touch or adjacent to three and sometimes in some cases four property owners. We do have a June 15th timeline and we're kind of looking at first come, first served for this first round.
I see. So the plan, my next question is, the plan is to do this again?
We're, we're hoping. I mean, because the, the more that we can get rid of this, there's less maintenance and less taxpayer dollars that we have to use to maintain these properties down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Swersky?
So if a citizen is interested in this, and I've already had several ask me about it, what's the first step? What do they do? And how soon can they apply for this?
Well, first of all, we've already have mailed out, like I said, 960 letters and packets, but they, they can reach out. If they were not included in this 250, they can reach out to the Office of Integrated Development. I will provide that contact information, the name of the administrative staff and email address that would be needed to be considered beyond this 200, original 250.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you, President Somerville. Thank you, President Somerville. Mr. Valley, you'd mentioned the June 15th deadline. And I see here the 250 lots, I believe that's, that's available. If we would take a week's time, it just seems as though there's a lot of moving parts to this. Would that hinder this program at all? We don't have the consent agenda, I'd recommend that. But without that, just there's so many different phases to this. Just I, I would think that a Ward Council member may want to really kind of study it. Any thoughts, Mr. Valley?
I, I have no problem whatsoever with council taking a week's time. Just please reach out during the course of the week if you have any questions.
Yeah, part of, part of the concern here, and, and this is great because all the 250 lots that are in play today is good, but they're going to be added down the road. And I'm just asking that the administration, Mr. Valley, and I talked about this earlier today, just ensure that the Ward Council members kept apprised of those that lots that may be, may become in play. I think that's important as well. But with that, if it's okay with council, I'd like to just recommend one week's time.
So Councilman Fusco, you want to make that motion?
Yes, yeah. I make a motion for one week's time.
So the motion on the floor, can we get a second by Councilman Swersky?
Yeah, I'll second it. I'll take a week's time, yes.
Roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye.
The motion for time passes 13 to 0. Item number eight offered by President Somerville. Ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to accept the Financial Empowerment Center Expansion Grant Funding Award awarded through the cities for Financial Empowerment Fund, authorizing expenditure of the same and declaring an emergency.
Okay, now we will have our grants manager, Melinda Sampson, will present on this for us.
Thank you, President Somerville. And good evening, council members. In the face of this current pandemic crisis, helping residents manage their finances is more critical than ever. To help meet this vital need, the Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund, or the CFE Fund, requested letters of interest from their current Financial Empowerment Center partners, of which Akron is one of those partners. Basically, they were looking for, again, partners with the capacity to hire additional FEC counselors to meet increased demand for FEC services due to the COVID-19 pandemic. If we were granted an award through the CFE Fund for this expansion grant, the award would basically be $80,000 to pay for an additional FEC counselor. I'm happy to say that the Akron FEC, the city of Akron, is a recipient of this grant. And we will be basically receiving $80,000 through the CFE Fund to hire one additional counselor. This legislation basically enables us to accept the award and expand the funds to hire this position within the Financial Empowerment Center here in Akron.
Thank you. At this time, are there any comments or questions from any council members? Councilwoman Amobian?
Yeah, I'm just curious, this $80,000 is for what salary and benefits or does it sound?
Exactly. It is salary and benefits for one counselor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? Councilman Fusco?
I know, I, I was, I, I noticed Mr. Malik had his hand, hand up.
Councilman Malik, you have a question?
Yes, I'm sorry. Ms. Sampson, I just wanted to ask, I know that, I believe that, you know, with the COVID-19 crisis, that the financial counseling services that are part of this have moved to like video conference. Is there an update on sort of how those services have been going via video conference? And, you know, have we seen people responding and still accessing them?
Yes, there are definitely people still reaching out. However, our co-location sites that included a lot of our satellite locations, as you were saying, because of the stay-at-home order with COVID-19 have closed. But a lot of those are moving to the remote counseling online sessions. And I just wanted to also plug something new that, you know, due to this crisis, has kind of been spurred on through the Financial Empowerment Center. We've rolled out something called Ask a Financial Coach Navigator Phone Calls at the end of April, which were about 15-minute phone calls that could be scheduled with a financial coach to answer questions related to stimulus payments, taxes, student loans, unemployment. So this has really spurred, they were planning on rolling this out, you know, a little bit later in the summer. But this is, again, shown the need for more remote counseling. So in a way, there was kind of a stall due to the satellite locations, again, being closed at the moment. Those will hopefully reopen shortly. But again, they've pretty much moved to a lot of remote counseling.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sampson. If there are no other questions, would like to make a motion for suspension of the rules with a favorable report?
Okay, thank you so much. We do have a motion on the floor, but I do see that Councilman Freeman has a comment.
Yes, I, I just wanted to kind of chime in on what Ms. Sampson said in talking with one of the counselors down there. It doesn't sound like their work has been thwarted whatsoever. And
No.
Just really appreciate their work and what they're doing, especially right now. Situation being exacerbated by, by COVID. But it sounds like they're really reaching out to some folks that maybe before would not have considered needing their services. And we're just very glad they're there.
Thank you. So we do have a motion on the floor. Councilman Freeman, would you like to second that motion?
I second the motion, thank you.
Roll call.
Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye.
This ordinance passes 13 to 0.
Thank you.
Item number nine offered by President Somerville. Ordinance amending and/or supplementing Title IX, Chapter 101 Trees and Shrubs, Section 101.01, Definitions of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Akron and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Before we go into this piece, Councilman Swersky, your camera's gone out, your video.
Yeah, I know. I know it happened, I just.
Okay, so we'll let you, we'll let you work.
There we go.
Very perfect. We staged that. Very good.
Perfect. We see that. Very good. We're actually going to have Mr. Hardy present on this item for us.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. The ordinance you have before you changes the definition in our tree ordinance, our overarching tree ordinance of what is a nuisance tree. Some of you may recall, and for our newer council members, by way of background, a little over a year ago, we updated our nuisance, our tree ordinance citywide to really make it more robust. But one of the things that was unintended from that was the, the change to the definition of what is and is not a nuisance tree essentially made it so that anyone could make a complaint about any tree in the city, that it was a nuisance in some way, shape, or form. So just by way of little statistics, from two thousand nineteen, our city arborist, of which there is one, logged five hundred and six hours responding to nuisance tree complaints. Just for reference, only five percent of his duties on his, on his job description are supposed to be spent on nuisance trees. He spent twenty-seven percent of his time last year responding to these different complaints. What kinds of complaints were these? The most typical ones were, my neighbor's branch is hanging over my property, and I don't want to rake the leaves anymore. The fruit from my neighbor's tree is dropping on my car, or my neighbor's tree branch is growing on my roof, and I want the city to remove it. So they ended up turning into essentially neighbor-to-neighbor disputes, which I would argue was not the intent of our tree legislation, and it's certainly not the intent of the city to interject itself into every single neighborhood dispute involving a tree. And so what you have before you is a simple change that would designate that the definition of a nuisance tree would have to include that that tree either has a risk of falling onto right-of-way or public property, or is on public property or in the right-of-way. So that will, in our estimation, really focus our, our time and attention, which is limited, on those trees that really will impact the public welfare and get our city arborist and the Office of Integrated Development out of some of the interpersonal disputes between neighbors that involve our, our tree canopy. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you. I was one of the primary sponsors whenever we had brought that in initially. The question is, is are we talking about trees only on city property, or ones that are also on private property?
It would, private property trees would still be eligible to be declared a nuisance tree, but there would have to be a, close enough to the public right-of-way or to publicly-owned property to that if they fell, it would fall onto public land. So if, for example, there's a tree that's right in the middle of someone's backyard, and that backyard abuts another person's backyard, that would not be a nuisance tree under this change. That would have to be something that between those neighbors, they're going to have to work out. We're not going to come in and take the tree down or try and mediate that dispute.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Malik?
Yes, Mr. Hardy, thanks for the background, because I wasn't aware of it. And I appreciate, you know, especially understanding the constraints on the city arborist's time. I guess the one question that I have, and you have addressed it somewhat, but I just want to vocalize, is, you know, I recently saw an instance where a, you know, in the backyard of a, of a resident, there's a tree that you really is about to fall, it's like barely supported by another tree. And it, you know, when it falls, it's going to fall on the neighbor's yard, and, you know, presents a pretty significant risk of harm. And, and, you know, something more than, you know, the leaves or that kind of thing. And, and I appreciate that that may be something that's suited to the court system, but I, I do wonder if there's been any consideration to those sort of extreme things where it may not have an impact on city right-of-way, but it, it does seem like it could present some form of like physical danger or something like that.
Sure. I, I think that what you describe is something that could absolutely happen and probably does. Those of us that are homeowners and, and deal with those issues with our neighbors, that really truly is something that historically has been dealt with between neighbors or through the civil courts. The question, I think, for council is whether or not we want to be in the business of handling such disputes and, and as a city. We are obviously, after trying it for a year, we're coming back and saying, no, we don't think it's actually the best use of our time. But that is not to say that a homeowner, you know, as the city arborist has time, could not avail themselves of his expertise if there's a chance for him to stop out there to take a look at it. Certainly, he can provide experienced knowledge to the homeowners. The question is, is that we, we can't really, even under this ordinance, as it's written now, issue a lot of orders to correct that situation. So for example, out of the two hundred and forty requests for nuisance trees to be removed, we removed one under this ordinance, because it just was, you know, there was no reason to, other than interpersonal issues between neighbors. So not saying we wouldn't, but it's, there, there would, there would be nothing with this change that would stop us from removing a tree to preserve property or safety, even if it didn't touch the right-of-way. But under the current written form now, everything, every tree in the city could be declared a nuisance tree. And so the city arborist really has no ability to take those case by case. He kind of has to respond to all of them.
Charlie, I appreciate the, and I, I appreciate the concern. I, I guess, just to understanding, if, if this change was made, what would the authority be to remove such a tree that was on private property? That threatened another private property with some form of.
I would imagine, and again, I'm not an attorney, but I would imagine that we'd have to have some sort of written agreement from both parties that we would, that the city would be removing it for those purposes. I'd have to get back to you on that. But again, I, I'm not certain that that's the best use of city resources. But again, that's, that's our opinion, and that's why we brought it to you for discussion.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Amobian?
I think my question is very similar to the one that Councilman Malik just raised, because I, I was very familiar with the situation where you had a dead tree. I mean, true, there was literally dying or dead. The branches fallen off into the neighbor's yard and eventually did damage to their shed and their fence. And the person tried to work with the neighbor to get it down, but the neighbor kept promising to do something, but never did. And it wasn't until the, the tree literally fell down on the shed and the fence, that something was done. But I see what you're talking about. It, it becomes a legal matter. And, yeah, I, I never knew that trees could be so much of a nuisance.
Thank you so much. So at this time, we'll have Councilman Swirsky, then Councilman Freeman.
Yeah, I mean, the situations that were described are troubling, they are difficult. But let's keep in mind that trees, research has shown that trees improve property values. Secondly, trees are one way, and protecting trees are one way. This city do what other cities are doing around the country, and that is help in the effort to fight climate change. So I'm very relieved that we're making it a little more difficult for a tree to be removed from our canopy, because they are valuable on an economic sense. And of course, they are valuable on a public health and environmental sense. So I applaud the efforts to take a look at this problem and to rectify it in a way that I think serves the public good, which is what our job is about.
Thank you, councilman. Agreed.
Councilman Freeman?
Probably just would like to add this, especially for our newer council members. Just my history, I think it's, it's a private property issue. I agree with Mr. Hardy. I don't think we want to be in that business. However, I have encouraged, I mean, multiple constituents to obtain counsel, have counsel write their neighbor a letter. A copy of that letter would then go to the constituent's insurance company, because if, if your neighbor's tree falls on your house, and you've not given private, a, a personal notification, your insurance is going to pay for it. Situation is reserved, is reversed. If, if I write a letter, or I have an attorney write a letter to my neighbor, they are made aware of the fact that there is a dangerous tree. If that tree does fall, my insurance company is going to defer to the tree owner's company. And usually, when a neighbor receives a letter like that, the problem is usually rectified. And that's something that I've used, it's been effective, and there's usually no warfare that breaks out over it.
Thank you, Councilman Freeman. Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you. Having served as Ward Council representative, I can certainly sympathize that there are situations that arise where the tree is in fact dead, and it's in fact gonna eventually fall on someone's property. This council voted on this, because in the past, we were, our hands were tied, and we didn't have any, any solution whatsoever. So therefore, what we did was we charged the, you know, the city with, you know, if there is a complaint, that we would go out and we would investigate, and if there is a problem. And the, it's basically a nuisance complaint. It's like high grass. So in essence, we go out and we investigate it. If it is determined to be a nuisance, then it would be, the, the property owner would be notified, given so many days to correct it. And if they didn't correct it, then what would happen is the city would go ahead and take care of this, the problem. And the neighboring property wouldn't have a problem. This is the first I heard that we, we've had abuse like this. And so it's, it's unfortunate. I just, like I said, I'm no longer a ward council member, but you will be getting those calls eventually, where there, and you will go out and look at them, and you will see that they are clearly a dead tree. You know what I'm saying? So like I said, ward council members, I, I just ask that you take very careful consideration to this and, and give it a lot of thought, because these situations do arise. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any additional comments or questions at this time? Councilman Fusco?
I'd, I'd recommend that we refer this item for further review.
So we do have a, a motion on the floor for time. Can we get a second by Councilman Lombardo?
I second that.
Roll call? Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman? Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swirsky?
Aye.
Motion passes, time will be taken. Item number ten, offered by President Somerville. Ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to enter into an agreement or agreements with neighboring communities or other governmental agencies for motor equipment services, including but not limited to fueling, repairs, vehicle or equipment maintenance, car washes and vehicle disinfection and decontamination, and declaring an emergency. Don Valley?
Yes, thank you, Council President Somerville, members of council. This is our agreement for services that we do provide to Summit County Departments, AMHA, Akron Zoo, Keep Akron Beautiful, University of Akron, specifically for car washes and fuel. And I would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Do we have any comments or questions at this time? Councilman Fusco?
And the rules of the favorable report?
We have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second by Councilman Neal?
So.
Roll call? Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swirsky?
Aye.
This ordinance passes thirteen to zero. Item number eleven, offered by President Somerville. Ordinance authorizing the director of public service or his designee to enter into a contract after contracts after publicly advertising for bids for the construction of the US two twenty-four Maslin Road intersection and declaring an emergency. Mr. Valley?
Thank you, Council President Somerville, members of council. With this ordinance, we will enter into a contract for construction of the US Route two twenty-four Maslin Road Intersection Singulization Project. We received the safety funds to replace all traffic signals, reconstruct driveway approaches to make them right turn only on, on exit due to traffic accidents. This project will also match up with our US two twenty-four resurfacing project that will be bidding very soon here. The total cost is six hundred thirty thousand dollars. Five hundred fifteen thousand dollars is the state safety funds, and a hundred fifteen thousand is our local match with general obligation funds. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments at this time? Councilman Fusco?
Recommendation for suspension of the rules of the favorable report.
Thank you. Can we get a second by Councilman Malik?
Second.
Roll call? Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swirsky?
Aye.
This ordinance passes thirteen to zero. Item number twelve, offered by President Somerville. Ordinance authorizing the director of public service or his designee after publicly advertising for bids to enter into a contractor contracts for the replacement of the Stuber Street Bridge and declaring an emergency. Mr. Valley?
Thank you, Council President Somerville, members of council. This ordinance will allow us to enter into a contract after advertising for the replacement of the Stuber Street Bridge. This is located off North Street to the Lisbeth Parkway. The bridge is over fifty years old. We've received an Ohio Public Works, Works Commission grant to replace this bridge. The new bridge will be a con-span arch beam. Currently, what's happening with heavy rains, tree debris gets washed and it collects underneath the I-beams. And Councilwoman Tara Samples is very familiar with this. When we get heavy rains, trees and tree branches wash underneath there, causing, you know, flooding onto the roadway. And this will correct that problem. It's a toll of one point three million dollars. One point two is Ohio Public Works Commission, and a hundred twenty-seven thousand is our local match with general obligation dollars. With that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
We have any questions or comments at this time? Councilman Fusco?
Suspension of the rules with a favorable report?
We do have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second, Councilwoman Samples?
Second.
Before we take the roll call, Councilwoman Samples did ask for her name to be added. We'll make sure that happens. Roll call? Baylor?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Lombardo?
Aye.
McHittick?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Neal? Amobian?
Aye.
Samples?
Aye.
Somerville?
Aye.
Swirsky?
Aye.
This ordinance passes thirteen to zero. Item number thirteen, offered by President Somerville. Ordinance declaring the necessity of and determining to proceed with and levying special assessments for the improvement, construction, and reconstruction of the sanitary sewer lateral serving the property located at two zero one zero West Mark Street in the city, all together with the necessary appurtenances there. all together with the necessary appurtenances thereto, all in accordance with the petition submitted by the property owner of the benefited property and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Valley?
Council President Somerville and members of council. Back in February, uh, this council passed emergency legislation to repair the sewer lateral for the apartment building located at 2010 West Market Street. The total cost is, uh, $30,000. Sewer capital funds will be used. This was an emergency. Like I said, it was an 18-inch, 14-feet-deep sanitary sewer repair. Now this will allow us to assess that property o- over 10 years.
Are there any questions or comments at this time? Councilman Fusco?
I approve with, uh, suspension of the rules.
Oh, we have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second, uh, by Councilwoman Baylor?
Second.
Baylor?
Hi.
Connor?
Hi.
Freeman?
Hi.
Fusco?
Hi.
Kammer?
Hi.
Lombardo?
Hi.
McHittick?
Hi.
Malik?
Hi.
Neil?
Hi.
Amobian?
Hi.
Samples?
Hi.
Somerville?
Hi.
Sworowski?
Hi.
This ordinance passes thirteen to zero. Item number 14 offered by President Somerville. Ordinance authorizing the director of public service or his designee after publicly advertising for bids to enter into a contractor contracts for the reconstruction of the Quaker Ridge Sanitary Pump Station in Force Main located at 2620 Ridgewood Road and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Valley?
Council President Somerville, members of council. This ordinance will allow us to enter into a contractor contracts for the construction of the Quaker Ridge Pump Station. It's located on Ridgewood Road, uh, next to Route, uh, the Route 77 exit ramp, actually behind the Circle K. It was constructed in 1982. Uh, there'll be natural gas generators for backup power, automatic transfer switches, communications and ventilation equipment. It's a toll of 1.1 million dollars. The money is coming from sewer capital funds and the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. And I would glad, gladly answer any questions.
Are there any questions at this time? Councilman Fusco?
I believe, uh, Mr. Malik had his hand up.
Councilman Malik?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Valley, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, do you have the balance between what's the WPCLF and what is the sewer capital fund in terms of the cost?
I do not, but we will get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions at this time? Councilman Fusco?
Suspension of the rules of the favorable report.
A motion on the floor. Can we get a second by Councilman Kammer?
Yes, I will second, uh, Councilwoman Jeff Fusco's motion.
Roll call.
Baylor?
Hi.
Connor?
Hi.
Freeman?
Hi.
Fusco?
Hi.
Kammer?
Hi.
Lombardo?
Hi.
McHittick?
Hi.
Malik?
Hi.
Neil?
Hi.
Amobian?
Hi.
Samples?
Hi.
Somerville?
Hi.
Sworowski?
Hi.
This ordinance passes thirteen to zero. Item number 15 offered by President Somerville. Ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to enter into water pollution control loan fund agreements with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency and the Ohio Water Development Authority for the reconstruction of the Quaker Ridge Sanitary Pump Station in Force Main located at 2620 Ridgewood Road and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Valley?
Council President Somerville and members of council. This, uh, ordinance goes hand in hand with the previous one that allowed us to bid award and enter into a contract. This one will allow us to apply for water, uh, pollution control loan funds with the Ohio EPA and the Ohio Water Development Authority for the Quaker Ridge Pump Station. Again, the total cost is 1.1 million dollars and it's over 38 years old, need replaced.
Thank you. At this time, are there any other questions or comments as it relates to this piece? Any questions or comments? Councilman Fusco?
I'd like to recommend suspension of the rules of the favorable report.
We have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second by Councilman McHittick?
Second that motion.
Roll call.
Baylor?
Hi.
Connor?
Hi.
Freeman?
Hi.
Fusco?
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi.
Kammer?
Hi.
Lombardo?
Hi.
McHittick?
Hi.
Malik?
Hi.
Neil?
Hi.
Amobian?
Hi.
Samples?
Hi.
Somerville?
Hi.
Sworowski?
Hi.
This ordinance passes thirteen to zero. Item number 16 offered by President Somerville. Ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the County of Summit Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Board and the Akron Municipal Court to permit the Akron Municipal Court to receive a subsidy for its specialty courts and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. I think we do have, uh, Montrela Jackson Court Administrator who is here to present on this item.
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President, councilpersons. Um, today, um, we are requesting legislation to permit the, um, authorization for the city to enter into agreement with, uh, the Summit County ADM Board for the acceptance of $210,000 of subsidy monies that were granted, um, based on the specialized dockets. We have five of those specialized dockets at the Akron Municipal Court, OVI Court, Family Intervention Court, Mental Health Court, Recovery Court, and Valor Court. The funds were allocated through the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services.
Thank you. So at this time, are there any council members that have any questions or comments? I see Councilwoman Amobian.
I don't have any questions. I think everybody knows that we are, we started the specialty courts. Uh, the first one was the Mental Health Court. And the Honorable, uh, Judge Annalisa Williams is now presiding over that court. But it was started by, um, Honorable Judge, uh, Elmar Stormer many, many years ago. Since then, we have created all of the ones that, um, Mrs. Montrela spoke about. And, um, these have really led to less individuals going to jails and hospitals and all of those things. So, so we do enhance the lives of those individuals who come before these judges and these programs. And trying to give them a second and third and fourth chance to, uh, improve the quality of their lives. So it's, uh, they are great programs and we should be extremely proud of what these, uh, municipal court judges have done.
Thank you. At this time, are there any additional comments or questions? Councilman Fusco?
I'd like to make a recommendation, uh, for favorable and, um, suspension of the rules.
So we do have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second by Councilwoman Samples?
Gladly, second.
Roll call.
Baylor?
Hi.
Connor?
Hi.
Freeman?
Hi.
Fusco?
Hi.
Kammer?
Hi.
Lombardo?
Hi.
McHittick?
Hi.
Malik?
Hi.
Neil?
Hi.
Amobian?
Hi.
Samples?
Hi.
Somerville?
Hi.
Sworowski?
Hi.
This ordinance passes thirteen to zero.
Okay, thank you so much. We will now move into, um, our committee assignments. Um, starting on next Monday, we will resume having, um, Akron City Council Committee meetings via Zoom. Um, and so, kind of go through our list here. Rules, Councilman Freeman, what time? Councilman Freeman, you're, you're on mute.
Uh, what, I was ready for you to ask me about budget and finance. What time do we normally schedule?
Uh, 2:30.
2:30 then, thank you.
Well, now we'll have you do budget and finance.
Budget and finance, 3 p.m.
Perfect. Planning and Economic Development, Councilman Fusco?
One.
Public Service, Councilwoman Samples?
Two o'clock?
Yes. It's been a long time. Uh, Public Utilities and Green, Councilman Sworowski?
Uh, well, we can make it two four, 2:45 since somebody already.
You're, you're 2:30.
2:30, okay.
Public Safety, Councilman Kammer?
Uh, 2:15 on June 8th.
Thank you. Parks and Rec, Councilman Neil?
2:45.
Housing and Neighborhood Assistance, Councilman Fusco?
Subject's call.
Health and Social Services, Councilwoman Amobian?
2:30.
Thank you so much. Is there anything coming before council before we adjourn? Councilman Fus, oh wait, Councilwoman Samples, I see your hand. But you're on mute.
Um, as, as we're having our meeting, I'm trying to like watch CNN and pay attention, but, um, I see Chief Ball got offline. But maybe if the administration, uh, can make sure they keep us abreast on things that are going on, uh, with our safety forces. Uh, they just broke in on the news and said the president is going to deploy military into all the states. Um, and if this does happen, can they please let us know ahead of time so we can be letting our residents know? Because this really, I think, is a different look for us as a state, definitely as a country. But I think that is going to put a different kind of, uh, concern, uh, within our own residents. So if this does happen, can you please let us know ahead of time so we're not finding out in the Beacon Journal or something because our residents, this is going to scare a lot of people.
Thank you so, okay, thank you so much, Councilwoman Samples. Councilman Neil?
Thank you, ma'am. Just wanted to, um, one, uh, I'm hoping that we can end this meeting in prayer, in light of all that's been going on for months. Um, and the recent actions. Um, uh, hoping that we don't just have prayer just as a, as a a standard thing to do. I hope that we really do believe in it. But then I also just wanna, I want to commend Ms. Rose as I, as I said on the, uh, declaring racism a public health crisis. Um, I'm sure there'll be news in the paper because as I say, Cleveland and Columbus are passing it today. We know the Ohio State, the, uh, Black, uh, Ohio Black Legislative Caucus has adopted it since Franklin County has passed it. And I want to challenge, I want us to think about this now as a council. Councilman Malik mentioned it. When we declare racism a public health crisis, that means in everything we do, education, housing, health and wellness, the very way we govern, we look at, uh, and use a metric to make sure that we are addressing that issue. And so, um, saying that in each one of our, uh, commitment that we share, we should have an initiative that addresses racism as is found in housing, economic development, health and wellness, wherever it's found. So, um, again, uh, George Floyd, I want to call his name and all the others, and I'm hoping we can end in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Neil. Uh, Councilman Sworowski?
Yeah, uh, I, I agree with, uh, Councilman Neil. Um, and I think also though that we ought to have the, uh, Health Department Director back at some point soon to give us an update on what's happening. I know a lot of our small businesses are, you know, struggling with how to create social distancing. Um, and I just want to keep, uh, the Health Department close to us, uh, and dialoguing with us about what their efforts are.
Thank you, Councilman Sworowski. Are there any additional comments at this time? Uh, seeing and hearing none, I will ask if Councilman Freeman, uh, would close us in prayer?
We'll pray together. God, thank you that you have called us to the positions that we're in. We do not take these things lightly. God, we've, we've sang it multitudes of times. God bless America. And not, Father, we do pray first of all for the health crisis upon our country, that, uh, we rely upon governments, we rely upon the powers that be, but to remind us, God, that we, we are our brother's keeper. God, uh, issues that we spoke of tonight of, uh, of race and inequity. Father, I would pray for us as individuals that, uh, we would look at one another even as you look upon us. God, give us guidance, give us your wisdom. And, uh, again, we are our brother's keeper. And you have told us that the greatest commandment is that we could love one another. And so may everything we say and do be bathed in that principle, that golden principle of doing for others, those things that we would have come back to us. Thank you for this meeting this evening. God, please bless our country, uh, bless our city. We thank you for your love. We pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Freeman. Councilman Fusco?
Oh, should I adjourn?
Um, can we get a second, Council, Councilman Sworowski?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, so all in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
This concludes the live broadcast of Akron City Council. President Somerville presiding.